Good evening. I'm going to call this city council meeting to order. If we could have roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Councilmember Carr is absent. Councilmember Panduro?
Here.
Councilmember Santu?
Here.
Councilmember Tonison?
Here.
Councilmember Williams is absent. She may call in on public comment. Vice Mayor Bertani?
Here.
And Mayor Moy?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
And the invocation tonight is Pastor Jeff Hood of First Baptist Church.
Let's pray together. God, we give you praise and wonder tonight because of who you are, what you do, your goodness, your grace as we go through each day. We're grateful that you know us, you care about what concerns us. Thank you. We hold up to you our mayor and city council tonight. I thank you for their leadership, their commitment to our city, as well as their wisdom in addressing issues, finding solutions to problems. I pray that you would continue to guide them and help them as they provide direction and help them to keep in mind all the different peoples that constitute our city. Each person is important. Each person is worthwhile. And I pray that you would help our council navigate concerns in an intelligent, reasonable manner. I pray for the presentations that will be ensuing tonight, help each contributor, give their best submission, and may the reception be gratifying for all. And Lord, I thank you for the opportunity we've been given to have our voices heard in the realms of government. I thank you for the democracy that exists in our country, and I pray that nothing occurs to curtail that freedom. Again, I lift up our mayor and council, give them wisdom for the sake of us all. And I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. And now, Councilman Sandu will lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we'll go to council reports. We'll start with you, Manvir. Councilman Sandu, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As many of you know, it's Diwali today, yesterday, this weekend. It's hard to say which day it is. We celebrate so much. But this weekend, I had the pleasure of attending alongside many of us at the Diwali festival here in Green Valley, which was an amazing event. And then, yeah, that's the main thing for today. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Madam Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. It is always a better meeting when this chamber is full, so I appreciate you coming in and, of course, watch it from home as well. And I am going to direct you to the Clergy Action Network website. It's clergyactionnetwork.com. For our upcoming food giveaways, we have one tomorrow at Grange Middle School from 2:00 to 3:30. And for our November 25 Thanksgiving dinner upcoming, so clergyactionnetwork.com. I want to just talk a little bit about the proposed Vista Ridge project. As you all know, the mayor and I, and hopefully our colleagues as well, but the mayor and I are hosting a town hall meeting tomorrow evening, beginning at 5:00 p.m., from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And that's going to be at Willow Hall, right across over 1,000 Kentucky Street, at the Fairfield Civic Center. And I just want to make some things clear, because there's been a lot of different flyer iterations going around, and there's been some pulling and shoving on the language that is in these flyers, particularly regarding who is eligible to live at Vista Ridge if this project is approved. So for the sake of clarity, I want to just tell you that the language that the mayor and I proposed for our upcoming town hall meeting tomorrow included the following. This is who may live at Vista Ridge if it's approved. Seriously mentally ill individuals, and individuals addicted to drugs, sex offenders, and veterans. Okay? The flyer that you received, that's posted on the website and that the city manager sent out, says who can live at Vista Ridge. Homeless veterans, homeless individuals with mental health disorders, homeless individuals with substance abuse disorders. Hopefully, you hear the difference between those two iterations of the flyers. The reason I'm saying this is because what I am committed to doing is being transparent with you regarding the facts. Even if, you know, they're characterized by some as, you know, politically charged or whatever it is, the fact of the matter is that Tier One and Tier Two sex offenders will be eligible to stay at Vista Ridge, even though they're not on the flyer that you received for the upcoming town hall meeting tomorrow. Seriously mentally ill individuals will be able, well, maybe eligible, will be eligible, may be living there. And remember, this is permanent supportive housing, with an emphasis on permanent. This is not, this is, you know, it's not a shelter. This is pretty much in perpetuity. So I just want to make that clear. Whether you see it on the flyer or not, you deserve to know what may happen at that property if this project is approved. There's been a lot of talk about veterans being eligible to stay at the facility. I'm looking at a award via Home Key, the Department of Housing and Community Development, it's the state of California. That's where the money is coming from. This is called a Notice of Funding Availability, or NOFA. So this is the grant from the state of California for Vista Ridge. This document says that...
Good evening. I'm going to call this city council meeting to order. If we could have roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Councilmember Carr is absent. Councilmember Panduro?
Here.
Councilmember Santu?
Here.
Councilmember Tonison?
Here.
Councilmember Williams is absent. She may call in on public comment. Vice Mayor Bertani?
Here.
And Mayor Moy?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
And the invocation tonight is Pastor Jeff Hood of First Baptist Church.
Let's pray together. God, we give you praise and wonder tonight because of who you are, what you do, your goodness, your grace as we go through each day. We're grateful that you know us, you care about what concerns us. Thank you. We hold up to you our mayor and city council tonight. I thank you for their leadership, their commitment to our city, as well as their wisdom in addressing issues, finding solutions to problems. I pray that you would continue to guide them and help them as they provide direction and help them to keep in mind all the different peoples that constitute our city. Each person is important. Each person is worthwhile. And I pray that you would help our council navigate concerns in an intelligent, reasonable manner. I pray for the presentations that will be ensuing tonight. Help each contributor, give their best submission, and may the reception be gratifying for all. And Lord, I thank you for the opportunity we've been given to have our voices heard in the realms of government. I thank you for the democracy that exists in our country, and I pray that nothing occurs to curtail that freedom. Again, I lift up our mayor and council, give them wisdom for the sake of us all. And I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. And now Councilman Sandu will lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance.
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll go to council reports. We'll start with you, Manvier. Councilman Sandu, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As many of you know, it's Diwali today, yesterday, this weekend. It's hard to say which day it is. We celebrate so much. But this weekend, we had the pleasure of attending alongside many of us at the Diwali Festival here in Green Valley, which was an amazing event. And then, yeah, that's the main thing for today. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. It is always a better meeting when this chamber is full, so I appreciate you coming in and, of course, watch it from home as well. And I am going to direct you to the Clergy Action Network website. It's clergyactionnetwork.com. For our upcoming food giveaways, we have one tomorrow at Grange Middle School from 2:00 to 3:30. And for our November 25 Thanksgiving dinner upcoming, so clergyactionnetwork.com. I want to just talk a little bit about the proposed Vista Ridge project. As you all know, the mayor and I, and hopefully our colleagues as well, but the mayor and I are hosting a town hall meeting tomorrow evening, beginning at 5:00 PM, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. And that's going to be at Willow Hall, right across over 1,000 Kentucky Street, at the Fairfield Civic Center. And I just want to make some things clear, because there's been a lot of different flyer iterations going around, and there's been some pulling and shoving on the language that is in these flyers, particularly regarding who is eligible to live at Vista Ridge if this project is approved. So for the sake of clarity, I want to just tell you that the language that the mayor and I proposed for our upcoming town hall meeting tomorrow included the following. This is who may live at Vista Ridge if it's approved. Seriously mentally ill individuals and individuals addicted to drugs, sex offenders, and veterans. Okay? The flyer that you received, that's posted on the website and that the city manager sent out, says who can live at Vista Ridge. Homeless veterans, homeless individuals with mental health disorders, homeless individuals with substance abuse disorders. Hopefully, you hear the difference between those two iterations of the flyers. The reason I'm saying this is because what I am committed to doing is being transparent with you regarding the facts. Even if, you know, they're characterized by some as, you know, politically charged or whatever it is, the fact of the matter is that Tier One and Tier Two sex offenders will be eligible to stay at Vista Ridge, even though they're not on the flyer that you received for the upcoming town hall meeting tomorrow. Seriously mentally ill individuals will be able, well, may be eligible, will be eligible, may be living there. And remember, this is permanent supportive housing, with an emphasis on permanent. This is not, this is, you know, it's not a shelter. This is pretty much in perpetuity. So I just want to make that clear. Whether you see it on the flyer or not, you deserve to know what may happen at that property if this project is approved. There's been a lot of talk about veterans being eligible to stay at the facility. I'm looking at a award via Home Key, the Department of Housing and Community Development, it's the state of California. That's where the money is coming from. This is called a Notice of Funding Availability, or NOFA. So this is the grant from the state of California for Vista Ridge. This document says that the amount of the award is $21,541, so $21 million plus. This document from the state of California says the number of assisted units reserved for veterans, zero. This document says veteran units additional operating award, zero. This is from the state of California for this project. This document says operating award, zero. So this money, the $21 million plus, according to the state of California, has nothing allocated for veterans and nothing allocated for funding. And so that's important to know. And this, all this information I'm getting, by the way, this is not coming to me from staff, I don't think. These are residents sending, you know, information online and to my email and everything. I've never seen this document before. I haven't. So what I'm saying is that regardless of how politically charged something may be, regardless of how upset some people may be with the word, the phrase "sex offender", the truth of the matter is that they're eligible to stay there. And as encouraging as it sounds to say that we're going to be housing veterans, the state of California says zero funding. And these are the people with the money. So I'm going to just encourage us to continue to get to the truth about this project and about what is really going on with this project. Quite frankly, I'm concerned.
Madam Mayor, David Lim, City Attorney. Just for the council, I just want to remind the council that this item has not been agendized for consideration. I think Vice Mayor Bertani's points about clarification of the flyer for tomorrow's town hall are completely appropriate, but I do think it's getting a little far afield, but I will leave that determination up to the mayor. I just wanted to point out, this item has not been agendized, but I think the point is well taken regarding the flyer, but I think it's getting a little far afield, just as your attorney.
I appreciate that, Mr. City Attorney, but this is my public comment, and I'm speaking to the public, because we report to the public.
Absolutely. And I report tall of even.
So it's not agendized. Excuse me?
No, I just said, I agree with you. My job is to assist you, so I just made my recommendation, but you're free to do whatever you want with that recommendation. It's my recommendation only, and of course, I will follow whatever actions you as a council wish to take.
These are points of clarification that the residents in this city who pay the bills...
Excuse me, miss. I'm going to ask you, excuse, miss? 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 Could you please, miss? Please, okay? Thank you. You'll have a time to speak later, but for now, please don't disrupt the meeting. Thank you so much.
No, there is no but, and you have no permission to tell me what to discuss, ma'am. You're completely out of line. Yeah, but you're, are you the attorney? Thank you. Stop. Please stop.
All right. Okay, thank you, ma'am. That's enough.
I look forward to seeing everyone at the town hall meeting tomorrow. Well, there will be more information shared, but I just want to be on the record to let you know that I'm still receiving information about this. And the vote for this is, I think, scheduled in November, so it's important that we get to, we get to it. Madam Mayor, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor and Councilwoman Panduro.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, everyone. I just had two quick updates. One is an event that is coming up, so on, starting on October, so on October 30th, so November 1st, let me backtrack a little bit, sorry. On November 1st, it is Dia de los Muertos, so it's Day of the Dead. And so in the Latino culture, we celebrate death as a cycle of life, and it is a celebration and acknowledgement of those who have passed on. And so this year with the city and along with partnerships with Solano Community College and the Solano Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, we are doing Dia de los Muertos, a community of ofrenda, and a candlelight visual. And so what is an ofrenda? An ofrenda is, you could think of it like an altar. There's different things on there that symbolize life and death, and we place pictures of our loved ones that have passed. And it is a way to recognize them, to remember them, and so we also like to bring things that they liked, so their favorite food, their favorite drink, a favorite toy. People put their pets on there as well. If you remember the movie Coco, we recognize and love everyone that has gone before us. And so it's going to be a lovely night. We are going to have a candlelight procession around the pond, and then we're going to end up in the lobby of the community hall. And in there, we're going to have a community ofrenda, so it's going to remain open through November 3rd, so everyone can come and look at it. They can come and bring a photo of a loved one or a memento. We're also going to have a board where if you don't have a photo of someone, you can come and just write their name and maybe a message to them. So we'll have a little message board for those who have passed. And then inside Willow Hall, we're going to have activities for the kids, and we're also going to have what's called Pan de Muerto. And so it's a special bread that we eat in our, in our culture during this time of the year, as a way to, again, recognize and acknowledge and celebrate those who have, our loved ones who have passed. And so I invite everybody, and again, that's going to be Thursday evening, October 30th, from 6:00 to 8:00, and we're going to gather out by the pond and then make our way inside. And then second, I wanted to just make everyone aware that our winter shelter is going to be opening also on November 1st, and it is being held over at Bay North Church. So that is 2100 Pennsylvania Avenue, and that starts November 1st and it runs through March 31st of 2026. The doors open, are open from 6:30 to 8:00 for night intake, and there is a free, there is a free bus ride. So if folks need a ride to the shelter, Route 3 and 6 from 5:00 to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, let the bus driver know you're needed a ride to the shelter, and they'll drop you off at the bus stop by the mall, and then people can just walk over to Bay North. So again, winter shelter, November 1st through March 31st, 2100 Pennsylvania Avenue. Doors open from 6:30 to 8:00. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Tonison?
Nothing for me tonight, Mayor, except screw cancer and screw dementia.
Amen. Amen. And I am going to report real shortly on my trip to Japan for the city of Fairfield. I went there, among other mayors, and we went there to speak. There were 15 of us or 14 of us altogether, and we spoke at the United Nations and, university, not the United Nations there, but it's where they train diplomats. And so I was able to speak there twice, three times, and give presentations on what we're doing here with AI in Fairfield. And what I found, and what we all found, including the folks in Japan, Japanese, that Fairfield is way, I know this is going to shock some people, we're way ahead of most other cities using AI. It goes a lot to our IT team and everybody working together. But it is, it was really spoken of well among the Japanese. I had one-on-ones with the governors there. The cities that we traveled to were Osaka, Yamanashi, and Tokyo, and we got a lot done that you'll be hearing more about in the future, including the governor, one of the governors wants to come here and meet us here in Fairfield and in the Bay Area to talk to our city manager and staff here about some initiatives that we talked about, including one for youth, youth initiative that they've already started, but we want to be part of it, or I do. It'll be up to the city council if we decide to do this, but it's really, really important, I think. People, young people talk to each other through art, and they've been doing this, they started it last year, and some of the other cities around our country are involved and around the world, from Africa, France, all over. So it's a, it's a great, great initiative. And then the other really big thing is that they want to talk to us about their technology in using green hydrogen to fuel, for fuel. It's renewable, and it's used well down there. They're getting a train that runs on green hydrogen. And over here, we're not as advanced in that as they are, but they are really happy that we have Solano College here with its biotech and that we're close to Cal Berkeley and also UC Davis. And so we plan to hook up with them. And the last thing that I'll say about it is that we're going to start partnering to do some trade, and that will include our friends in Sussin Valley and their wine, because the Japanese would like to have that wine over there. So those were just a few things, and I just wanted to touch base on that, and you'll hear more about it. I was really honored to represent us here on a once-in-a-lifetime, you know, trip that was, it wore me out. I, yeah, it was something, but I really appreciate it, and I'm honored. I'm honored to have done that. That's it, and Mr. City Manager, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. So October is, talking about IT, October is Cyber Security Awareness Month. Our IT department has done a fantastic job in bringing our cybersecurity up to standards and in some cases beyond here for the city of Fairfield, but also for all of our residents and constituents out there. If you go to fairfield.ca.gov/cyber, we have information up there with tips and tricks to help you all stay safe online, along the lines of cybersecurity as well. There will be a cybersecurity summit and conference that's being hosted right here in Fairfield at our Rancho Solano Golf Course on October 28th and 29th. There are informative sessions, you know, cybersecurity-related topics. I'm told there are still tickets available to that, so if anybody is in that space and interested, feel free to contact our IT Director, Naveed Ashraf. His information's on our website. And then the last item from me, Madam Mayor, is that item P3 on tonight's agenda, that is the very last item, the public hearing item, that is going to be continued to the meeting of November 4th. That's it from me.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, any report today?
No report, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. And Madam Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank a few new adoptive street groups. I also run the Adopt a Street program. K&amp;K General Contractors adopted South Watney Way. Casanova Mobile Home Park adopted part of Martin Road. Padilla's Premier Lawn Care adopted part of Mankas Corner Road. And Green Valley Middle School adopted, their logo is Keep It Clean Vikings, adopted part of Stonewood Drive. And then our deputy city clerk asked me to mention the following openings on our various boards and commissions. The Golf Advisory Board, there is still one seat available to fill a term from January of 26th to December of '29. You can email cityclerk@fairfield.ca.gov to get an application. Also, the Solano Commission for Women and Girls has one seat available, and it is for a representative of Fairfield. Their goal is to improve the economic status, health, and social welfare of life for women and girls in Solano County, and that is a three-year term starting January 1st. We also have one seat open for the Solano County Mosquito Abatement District Board of Again, you can get the information at cityclerk@fairfield.ca.gov. That is a two-year term for the mosquito abatement. Landscape Oversight Committee, we still have one seat open for District 2. Again, contact city clerk. And then Youth Commission recruitment is always ongoing, and you have to be ages 13 through 19 to be, to sit on the youth commission. And that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And so we'll go ahead on presentations, please.
Yes. Presentation one, Proclamation Declaring Breast Cancer Awareness Month, presented by Mayor Catherine Moy to Barbara Rigdon, President of the Solano Midnight Sun Foundation.
Hi. Come on up. Thank you. Thank you for everything that you do. You guys are fantastic. So I'm going to have you take this, and I'm going to read it. All right. National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 2025. Whereas during National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, the city of Fairfield stands with the courageous women and men who have been diagnosed with breast cancer and honors those who have lost their lives to this horrible disease. About one in eight U.S. women will develop breast cancer over the course of her lifetime. In 2025, an estimated 316,950 new cases of invasive breast cancer are expected to be diagnosed in women in the U.S., along with 59,080 new cases of non-invasive in situ breast cancer. About 2,800 new cases of invasive breast cancer are expected to be diagnosed in men this year. A man's lifetime risk of developing breast cancer is about one in 726. About 42,170 women in the U.S. are projected to pass in 2025 from this disease. Like Scott said, it sucks. Researchers estimate that inherited genetic mutations account for between 5% and 10% to as many as 27% of all breast cancers. Individuals whose family history puts them at increased risk for breast cancer should discuss proper prevention and early diagnosis strategies with their doctor or qualified health professional. Approximately 66% of breast cancer cases are diagnosed at a localized stage, which now has a five-year survival rate of 91%, while 27% are diagnosed at a regional stage and 6% have metastatic disease. National Breast Cancer Awareness Month promotes increased awareness of breast cancer and encourages individuals to develop a plan for early detection. Access to quality, affordable health care is essential for those affected by breast cancer, and continued support for research into all forms of breast cancer remains vital. Now, therefore, I, Catherine Kat Moy, Mayor of the city of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Fairfield, and I encourage all residents to learn more about breast cancer and the detection and prevention of breast cancer. And now, would you like to say a few words? Please.
Thank you, everyone. We have received this honor before, and it never ceases to humble us. We are so happy. We work really hard, and it is very hard to remind everyone how important it is to be aware. And I guess the message that I would like to give to all of you is, do that. Don't second-guess. Be aware. Ask the questions. And also, I'd like to give a little shout-out for our organization that says, we are here to help, and if someone is in financial need, please contact us right away. We often hear it when they are in critical financial need, and it would be so much better to hear it sooner than later. Thank you again.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
by Vice Mayor Pam Bertoni to several individuals, Abe Batista, Board Chairperson,
Come on down.
Vice President Jacob Francisco and Robert Bossa, Advisor to the Phil-Am Association of Fairfield, Susun, and Vacaville. Thank you.
Good evening. Would you like to hold that up?
Good evening and thank you for coming. Filipino American History Month, October 2025. Whereas October 18th, 1587, is the earliest documented proof of Filipino presence in the continental United States as the first Luzones and Diaz set foot in Morro Bay, California, and the first permanent settlements of Filipinos in the continental United States in St. Malo, Louisiana occurred in the mid 1800s. Between 1906 and 1935, the first large wave of Filipino immigrants began to work as farm workers in California and were an integral part of Solano County's agricultural economy and United States Armed Forces workforce at Travis Air Force Base and Mare Island Naval Shipyard, all of which set into motion the economic, cultural, social, and other contributions that Filipino Americans have made to our great nation. And whereas the Solano County connection to the Philippines first started when the U.S. Navy sent ships from Mare Island to the Battle of Manila Bay during the Spanish-American War in May 1898, after which they subsequently returned for repairs. And whereas Filipino presence in Solano County date back, dates back over 100 years, starting with the nannies and servants of U.S. naval officers stationed at Mare Island after the Philippine-American War in 1902. Filipino Americans comprised a large workforce sector at Travis Air Force Base, Mare Island Naval Shipyard, medical fields, business entrepreneurs, and the agricultural industry, contributing to the defense, economy, growth, and history of Solano County. According to a U.S. Census Bureau multi-year trend, Filipino Americans continue to grow and they remain the largest Asian-American Pacific Islander group in Solano County, the second largest in California, and the third largest in the nation. And whereas the city of Fairfield and the communities in Solano County have long recognized the contributions of Filipino Americans, several of whom have dedicated many years of service as leaders with various government and private entities, as well as having served as educators, elected leaders, health and social workers, civil servants, military members, and whereas the Filipino-American National History Society established the commemoration of October as Filipino-American History Month nationally, with the theme for 2025 as From Quotas to Communities: Filipino-American Migration and Movement, which commemorates two significant anniversaries, the 90th anniversary of the 1935 Philippine Repatriation Act and the 60th anniversary of the 1965 Immigration and Naturalization Act. And whereas continued efforts are essential to promote the study and understanding of Filipino-American history and culture as affirmed in the mission of the Filipino-American National Historical Society, recognizing that the contributions of Filipino-Americans and other communities of color have long been underrepresented in the writings, teachings, and learning of United States history. And whereas it is vital for Filipino-American youth to have strong and positive role models who inspire them to value education, take pride in their cultural heritage, and honor the legacy of those who came before them. Now therefore, Catherine Kat Moy, Mayor of the City of Fairfield, hereby proclaims the month of October 2025 as Filipino-American History Month and encourages all members of our community to recognize and celebrate the many contributions of Filipino-Americans' rich history, values, vibrant culture, and enduring legacy. Let us honor the positive role models who have proudly and humbly helped shape the diversity, strength, and spirit of our historic and beautiful city and our great nation.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here with our organization, Filipino-American Community of Fairfield, Susun, and Vacaville. In speaking part of the history, it's really true. I live part of the history here. I, I know our organization was incorporated here in 1956 in Fairfield, California here. And it's amazing because, you know, where Rayleigh's is right now is where we used to add Easter egg hunts, you know, on the property on Highway 40, you know, and just, it's amazing because the history of the farm workers started it here, you know, many, many years ago. Our presidents of the organization at the beginning were farm workers and, and some of them became managers of several ranches out here in, in the Green Valley and the Susun Valley. So our history is really rich and incorporated here. And now it's really exploding with a lot of young people involved in AI, involved in computers and everything like that. So we are so proud to be part of this community here. And especially right now, we're celebrating our 69th anniversary here in about two weeks here. We're having a little get together celebration in the hall here. But again, thank you very much for us, having us here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last proclamation, Proclamation and Poem Declaring Diwali Festival of Lights, presented by Councilmember Manveer Santhu. He'll read the proclamation first and then our poet laureate, Michael Wiley, will read a special poem he wrote for the occasion. The proclamation is going to three groups, Fairfield Hindu Temple, Baratia Heritage Foundation, and I apologize if I pronounce it incorrectly, and Guru Nanak Sikh Gurdwara Sahib.
Good evening, everybody. Quiet group today. Got some folks come up here. Well, hello.
We have so many.
I feel like I just saw some of you a few days ago.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, yeah. Should I hand these out, hand these out now?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll give one to the Heritage Foundation. Yeah. If you don't mind, actually, you want to stand right here so we can get, get some good pictures?
That's good.
And then the third one, the third one. Okay, okay. What were you, okay, okay.
Poetry.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll just clear the frontier. So we'll have a few people maybe go here. Well, before I read the formal proclamation, I just wanted to say a few words. As many of you know, this is actually one of the few traditions, cultures that celebrated across three different religions in the world. And I'll say that here in the proclamation, but what I wanted to start with saying was the following. America at its core is a framework, a set of rights, principles, and freedoms. But what gives that framework meaning are the people who came here and made it their home. The traditions we now celebrate across America were carried from every corner of the world and reshaped the, and reshaped through shared life and experiences. We eat Italian pizza, eat Mexican tacos, celebrate St. Patrick's Day, Lunar New Year, Day of the Dead, Oktoberfest, and now Diwali. California now being the third state to join Connecticut and Pennsylvania in recognizing it as a state holiday. While this might not be the first time Fairfield has celebrated it, it is now the first time California has officially acknowledged it. What we think of as an, as an American culture is in truth the collective creation of generations who have come to America seeking opportunity and together built something larger than themselves. Now, I'd like to say the following. Whereas Diwali is a festival of historic, religious, and cultural significance, is celebrated annually by millions of Hindus, Sikhs, Jains, and Buddhists throughout the United States and across the globe. And whereas the diversity of the community that celebrates Diwali comprises a vital part of Fairfield's rich ethnic and social fabric with languages, cultures, and religious beliefs that enrich our city and state. And whereas Diwali is an abbreviation of the Sanskrit Deepavali, is a festival of lights during which celebrants light small oil lamps, place them around their home, and pray for knowledge, peace, compassion, and universal well-being. And whereas the rows of lamps symbolize the light of knowledge and truth triumphing over negative qualities such as ignorance and greed. In other words, Diwali celebrates the victory of good over evil. And whereas Diwali is celebrated by Hindus as a day of Thanksgiving for the homecoming of Lord Rama and the beginning of the new year. And whereas for Sikhs, Diwali is celebrated as the day that revered teacher Guru Hargobind was released from captivity by the Mughal emperor Jahangir. And whereas for Jains, Diwali marks the anniversary of the attainment of Moksha, or liberation, by Mahavira at the end of his life in 527 B.C. And whereas for Buddhists, Diwali is commemorated as the day the great Emperor Ashoka embraced Buddhism as his faith. Now therefore, I, Catherine Kat Moy, Mayor of the City of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim October 20th, 2025, as a celebration of Diwali Festival of Lights and encourage its citizens to learn about this special holiday and honor our neighbors who celebrate this momentous occasion. Thank you so much.
their remarks.
So, sorry, we are not very, I'm representing Sikh temple, Gurdwara Sahib. I just want to share with you one thing. Maybe you can search on the Google. Diwali has another name. We call Sikhs, call is Bandi Shodh Devs. Can you say, please, Bandi Shodh Devs? Bandi Shodh Devs means release of prisoner. So that day, our sixth guru, Hargobin, they helped to release 52 kings that time. You know, they were present by that time Mughal Emperor. So that was the day we celebrate. So Diwali and Bandi Shodh Devs, together we celebrate. Thank you. So you, you know, give me great honor. Whole community is not here because they're celebrating tonight at Gurdwara Sahib. So please, you can join us. Free food. You can go and you cannot join with our prayers. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to Mayor Catherine Moy and our city council members for this wonderful proclamation. And recognizing Diwali in this way is truly meaningful to us and shows how much our city values cultural diversity and inclusion. Diwali is more than just a festival of lights. It's a celebration of triumph of light over darkness and it brings people of all backgrounds together in the spirit of hope and unity. At the Baratia Heritage Foundation, we are dedicated to promoting cultural understanding and celebrating our rich traditions. We are honored to work alongside the Hindu temple, the Fairfield Hindu temple, and the entire community to share these beautiful celebrations. And thank you again for this recognition and for supporting our efforts. We look forward to many more celebrations together in the future. Thank you.
Hi. We thank you, Mayor Moy, Mayor Catherine, and all the council members for bringing us here to represent the Hindu community and Sikh community, Jain community, all together, the people from India and over Asia. We wanted to tell you the meaning of Diwali, but they have already explained it, that Diwali means the return of Rama after 14 years of exile just to honor his father's words that were given to his stepmother and he followed his orders and he spent 14 years in jungle. But there was a cause behind it. He was sent to jungle to eradicate demons from the land. So that is a celebration that King Ravana, the demon king, along with his associates and family members were destroyed and killed and a peace was secured to the land. Rama returned to Ayodhya, the birthplace, after 14 years. And in memory of that, the people of Ayodhya celebrated, decorated the whole kingdom, and they lit thousands and thousands of lamp around the city. This is the tradition that has been continuing from since then. It was happened thousand, thousand years ago, maybe more than 5,000 years, but this is how Diwali is celebrated. That is the common cause of it. And we want you to come and join with us. Thank you very much for inviting us over here.
And now our poet laureate, oh.
Yeah. Thank you, respectable mayor and council members. And my fellow partner, Narish, already covered from Baratia Heritage Foundation. So I don't want to repeat the stuff that has already been said, but one thing that I have always observed is I came to U.S. 25 years ago. And when I left India and came to U.S., I mean, we were not that familiar with the festivals that happens here like Halloween and Thanksgiving. And when I came here, my name was Bharatwaj. No one could pronounce my name here, so they changed it to Brad. So I embraced Brad and I have been living with it. But my parents, they are like, hey, you know, why did you change your name? I said, that's fine. You know, India is my motherland, but U.S. is my mainland. You know, I've been here for long. That's okay. I embrace the culture here. But because of social media, what happened is 25 years fast forward, India now celebrates Halloween, much bigger than some of the cities do here. And India also celebrates Thanksgiving, you know, very grand fashion. So I haven't seen the same change So I haven't seen the same change in U.S., like U.S. embracing some of the other festivals. So I think this is a time that U.S. embraces Diwali as a festival of lights. It has a rich, rich history, you know, thousands of year-old history. And as a matter of fact, just a couple of days ago, we had a tremendous celebration, Diwali celebration in Fairfield, and mayor and some of the council members were there. Hope you all enjoyed it. Sure, thanks a lot, and, you know, good luck.
First of all, thank you so much for having us here, really appreciate it, and for proclaiming Diwali for the Hindu heritage. You saw, right, you know, like, it was no surprise, India is packed with people. It has 1.1 billion more people than the United States, so you saw that. But India is also packed with a lot of diversity, a lot of diverse group. So we have twenty-eight states in India, not as many as United States, but we speak twenty-eight languages in India, seventeen hundred and fifty dialects are there in India. So lots of different culture. My culture is very much different than my friend, Nareesh, or Brad. Dev Sharmaji, I come from Gujarat, and today is our new year. So we all call, we all always say each other, Sal Mubarak. Sal Mubarak means Happy New Year, yeah. So Sal Mubarak. So it is, Sal means year, and Mubarak means happy. So Sal Mubarak to everyone. The thing is that one fable or one story is that in India, we had some people, they came, immigrants came, a long time ago, in sixteen hundreds century, in sixteenth century, and India, the king said that we are full. He just gave a cup of milk, and he said to them that we are full, just like this, how will you, how will you, how you can fill this cup now? It is full of milk. The Zoroastrian people from Iran, they said that we will be like a sugar, and we will just add inside there, and we will bring sweetness to the milk. So the same thing is what assurance we can give you, that we will be bringing sweetness, colors, and, you know, a goodness to the community. Thank you again so much, really appreciate it.
And now Michael Wiley, our poet laureate, will read his poem. Thank you, Michael.
Yep, you bet. All right, well, first off, thank you for allowing me to be a part of this celebration. It is an honor. One lesson Diwali has offered me is one in our shared humanity, as light is representative of our learning, our compassion, and the hope that we are able to create together. So this poem titled "Thresholds" reflects on the light we sustain through care, patience, and daily acts of kindness that bind our community. It's offered in gratitude, in solidarity, and with deep respect. So the poem is titled "Thresholds." Render dusk a covenant of care. Light rearranged on window glass, rehearsing the return of sight. Each filament, a refusal to forget. In the quiet margin after work, as machines dim, as people cross streets and traffic merges homeward, each of us toward an open door connected in place together. We learn how to keep our light from vanishing. The hands that sweep, that deliver and repair, they are writing what tomorrow remembers. Kindness too is a kind of joyful labor. The patience to see another clearly without spectacle, bright as pulse. And morning returns, a patient architect who re-sculpts the day formed in our shared communion. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for that. That was wonderful. We'll now go to public comments. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Persons wishing to address the city council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. If you're online to speak on an agenda item, please use the raise your hand feature or press star nine on your phone. Speakers are limited to three minutes per item as determined by the mayor. And our first speaker is Tyler Dombrowski, to be followed by Tomage Pearson.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Tyler Dombrowski, and I'm a firefighter with the Fairfield Fire Department. I'm here tonight as someone who knows firsthand what this job can take from you. A few months ago, I was injured on duty, not in a dramatic rescue or a headline fire, but during routine business engaging with the youth of this community. Fortunately for me, it was an orthopedic injury that can be fixed. Others, less fortunate than I, lose their careers and have to deal with the results of these injuries for the rest of their lives, my older brother being one of those. He was forced to medically retire from the Fairfield Fire Department three years ago at the age of just thirty-two years old, as a result of cancer that they attribute directly to his time being a firefighter. His life changed forever, as he still suffers daily with symptoms from his diagnosis. That's the truth of our profession. There is no such thing as a routine day. Every time we lift a patient, crawl into smoke, or carry heavy equipment up a flight of stairs, our bodies absorb the cost. And when something gives out, it doesn't just affect us, it affects our families, our crews, and the entire system that keeps this city safe. Being sidelined during my recovery has given me perspective. I've watched my brothers and sisters continue to push through exhausting call volumes, sometimes running twenty or more incidents in a single shift. I've seen them come back from calls involving tragedy, wipe the shit off their faces, and come back from, and go right back out the door. That's the kind of quiet resilience Fairfield's firefighters show every single day. But behind that strength, there's strain. There's the pain in your back you learn to ignore, the sleepless nights replanning what you've seen, and the doctor visits where you hope all the scans are still clear. There's pride, but there's also fatigue, and that's why this contract matters, not as a paycheck issue, but as a statement of value. An independent financial audit conducted by an outside auditor shows that Fairfield is a strong, is in a strong financial position. So this isn't about what the city can afford, it's about what it chooses to prioritize. A fair agreement tells firefighters, injured or not, that their sacrifice is seen, their health is valued, and their service matters, because one day, every firefighter's career ends, but how they were treated along the way is what they remember most. We give everything we have to this job, our time, our health, and unfortunately, sometimes our futures. All we're asking is for the city to meet that commitment with fairness, dignity, and respect. Thank you.
Next is Tomage Pearson, to be followed by Ryan LaRoe.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Tomage Pearson, wife of a second-generation Fairfield firefighter. I am here tonight not as a firefighter, but as the wife of one. When my husband puts on his uniform, I know that he is stepping into a world where the risks are very real, exposure to smoke and toxins that can cause cancer, lifting patients that strain his back, and responding to scenes that can weigh on him for years. But I also know he does it willingly, because he loves this community and believes in service. At home, our family feels every part of that commitment. We celebrate birthdays and holidays without him, keep dinners warm until late at night, and pray through the long stretches of overtime. Our children know that when their dad leaves for work, he is leaving to help someone else's family, sometimes at the expense of ours. That is what service means to our household. Love for community stronger than the comfort of routine. What is hard to explain to our kids is why the city hasn't shown the same love back. Due to the fact that the city is unwilling to provide a fair contract, Fairfield firefighters are currently working with an expired contract, even while running record-breaking call volumes and supporting every corner of this city. They respond to fires, medical calls, car accidents, and rescues with unmatched professionalism. An independent financial audit conducted by an outside auditor shows the city of Fairfield is in a strong financial position. So this isn't about whether the city can do right by its firefighters, it's about whether it will. When you support your firefighters, you are not just investing in equipment and salaries, you are investing in families like mine, in stability and safety, and in the promise that the people who protect the city are protected in return. Fairfield deserves to be known as a city that values its dedicated public servants, not the ones that, not one that takes their sacrifices for granted. Please make this right for the firefighters and for their families and the community that they proudly serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Ryan LaRoe, to be followed by Chase Diaz.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Ryan LaRoe. I am a fire captain with the City of Fairfield, and I'm the treasurer of the Fairfield Professional Firefighters Association. I'm also a resident of the city. I live in Councilman Sandu's district. My kids go to school here, my neighbors are the people that we respond to when there's an emergency. Our crews go out and treat our friends and my family. We don't just work here, we live here, and when that alarm sounds, we're protecting our own community and our own families. Two years ago, our firefighters responded to a structure fire where there was a resident that was trapped. Working in zero visibility, our crews were able to locate that person unresponsive and get them out of that house. We were able to revive that person, and they're alive and well today because of the hard work of our crews. In that same year, we were able to respond to over a dozen patients that we were able to revive that are now with their families. Again, this year, same number, over a dozen. This isn't just, these things don't just happen by luck. They happen through high levels of training, teamwork, and unwavering commitment to the community that we serve. But that level of performance comes at a cost. Rising call volumes, physical strain, and emotional fatigue are constant. We carry the weight of the calls that don't make headlines, the ones that test our resilience in our hearts. Despite those challenges, Fairfield firefighters continue to deliver exceptional service, not just meeting those expectations but exceeding them. An independent financial audit conducted by an outside auditor confirms that Fairfield's strong fiscal position would support our contract. This isn't a question of resources, it's a question of values. Both a firefighter, both as a firefighter and a citizen, I want to see this city invest in its people who support it, not as a favor but as a reflection of shared responsibility. Supporting your firefighters means supporting your community's safety, stability, and future. We're proud of what we've built together, we're ready to keep building. Let's move forward as partners, not as opponents. And let's make sure that Fairfield remains a city defined by integrity, fairness, and for the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Chase Diaz, to be followed by Mike Guerra.
I just want to congratulate all the proclamations first. It's good to see the community coming together and thrive. Good evening, mayor and city council members. Try to make this as short as possible. My name is Chase Diaz. I'm a lifelong resident of the City of Fairfield, blessed to live and now serve in my very own community that raised me. I take that privilege pretty seriously. I currently serve as an acting captain and engineer with the Fairfield Fire Department. Many of you know me personally. I grew up here side by side with the late Matt Garcia, who was one of my best friends growing up. And like me, he dedicated his life to making the city safer and a better place for all who call it home. Tonight, I come before you not only as a firefighter, but as a resident, a neighbor, and someone who services the city day in and day out. Fairfield firefighters respond to thousands of emergencies each year. Call volume has steadily increased with raising expectations of us covering more areas than ever before, in addition to Cordia Fire Protection District and the City of Sassoon. We're now operating under a higher demand, and yet the city's attempting to cut our pay and benefits. To give you perspective, the City of Fairfield Fire Department staffs point-five firefighters per thousand residents. The national average is 1.5 to 1.8, so we're down a firefighter per thousand residents across the nation compared to the nation. This translates to significantly higher call load per firefighter compared to nearby departments. SAC Metro, for instance, larger city, 573 calls per firefighter. Vacville, neighboring city, 612 calls per firefighter. Fairfield has a whopping 810 calls per firefighter. That's a huge load on us. Since I joined this department in 2015, our annual call volume has increased to staggering forty-two point one percent in less than a decade. In light of the recent messages from some of the city officials suggesting pay cuts and benefit reductions, citing a projected deficit for six years into the future, several employee associations, including ours, funded the independent audit everybody keeps speaking of, the general fund reserve here in Fairfield currently stands at thirty-five percent, exceeding the city's own twenty percent reserve policy of nineteen point four million dollars. Let's look at precedent. In 2017, with reserves at twenty-six percent here in the city, the city approved a contract with raises over four years. In 2022, reserves were at thirty-four percent, and again, the city approved a contract with cola raises over three years. Today, with the reserves even higher at thirty-five percent, we're being told cuts are necessary. The men and women of this department perform at a high level that rivals departments twice our size with half the support. That doesn't happen by accident, like LaRoe said. It's a product of pride, integrity, and respect, and a genuine commitment to serve this community. These values are not just words on a wall in our fire station, they live in our hearts, and we call, and we carry them on every call, every shift, and every day. On behalf of my fellow firefighters, labor colleagues, and the citizens we serve, I urge you to do the due diligence you owe to the people who elected you, support the essential services that keep the city safe, resilient, and proud. Thank you.
Hello, Madam Mayor and City Council. Thank you, ma'am. Hello, I'm retired fire captain Mike Guerra, a proud former member of the Fairfield Fire Department for thirty-four years. I'd like to take a moment to thank past city council members for creating a proud city where people wanted to come to work, but today, that culture has changed a little bit. My last two years in this department were very stressful. I felt attacked by the city management and saw new firefighters who regretted their choice to come here from better-paying cities. They came here because we have a great culture, because it's a great city, and that's being threatened. In a world that teaches us that leadership is not about being in charge but taking care of those in your charge, this city council is choosing to support the city manager with extremely poor leadership. Sorry, David, has to be said. Citywide, very few of your employees are happy or feel safe at the workplace. I know city employees citywide have been here for a long time. You've all received my letter citing the examples of the hostile work environment that caused difficulty for me in focusing on emergency calls, the loss of sleep, and the physical effects of that stress. Though I am relieved to now be free of that, it is not how I wanted to leave, nor is how I wanted to leave it behind for my brothers and sisters. It's hard to enjoy retirement knowing what I leave behind and what they're having to face. California is becoming more and more expensive to live in every day. The idea that you would take from them as opposed to supporting them and make their life even harder is, seems a ridiculous option for me. I ask that you do what's right with your employees. The decisions that you all make today affect how we'll all be viewed in history. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thanks, Mike. And Phil Bailey.
Good evening, city council and staff. My name is Phil Bailey. I'm the vice president of Firefighters Local 1186, the president of the Fairfield Professional Firefighters. I would like to address a letter that Napa Solano Firefighters 1186 recently released. I would like to have transparency and give context to the issues addressed. Following an independent audit of the city's finances, the following facts were noted, as well as some responses by council to communication by the public. Number one, no firefighter wants to work excessive overtime. Those hours exist because Fairfield remains understaffed relative to call volume, not because of personal choice. Over the past few years, your firefighters have had to work extra due to vacant positions and many career-ending injuries and illnesses that have an impact on both the injured employee and the employees still working to fill that void. When a firefighter volunteers for extra shifts, it's often to relieve the burden on others who are working. that would be mandatory into that shift, thereby sacrificing time with her families. Every hour worked in overtime represents personal sacrifice in service to the community and fellow firefighters. Number two, the union has never opposed hiring additional firefighters. We've only sought that new positions are funded and implemented responsibly for long-term viability of those employees and the impacts to current employees. Number three, an independent audit, as well as an MFA done by the IAFF of the city's finances, show that the city finances are strong and sustainable with tens of millions in reserve beyond policy levels. The city can address staffing and fairness simultaneously without harming the fiscal stability. With the city offering nothing at the bargaining table, Fairfield firefighters face a real wage decrease of at least 3.5% within the first year due to inflation and additional losses associated with healthcare costs. We ask the city to rethink their strategy in negotiations and labor relations for the long-term health of the workforce and the organization. Your firefighters remain committed to collaboration and fair bargaining. We hope the city will follow suit. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Next is Carol Haddock.
Yeah, I wish I was at Dewali, having fun with those guys, with the good food.
Well, you can tell us you found a big bucket of gold somewhere so we can give them all they want.
Well, not today, the price went down. Oh, somebody watches the stock market besides me. Okay, all right, all right, go. Well, tonight, ladies and gentlemen, and I'm sorry we have two absent council members, I'm here speaking for a large group of citizens from Rolling Hills and Paradise Valley and Paradise Cove in the Dover area, and some sprinkled around the other side of the city. And we call ourselves the Citizens Against Vista Ridge. We felt it was important just to come here tonight because time is ticking down and when we have to vote on this, and we want to tell you why we're opposed to it and ask for, you know, some cohesive information at the next City Council meeting, because it's changing and we can't, we can't keep up with it. We disagree with the location of Vista Ridge within a vibrant commercial community. We believe it will harm the nearby businesses. The business owners are talking to our group, and I happen to be the spokesperson, so I'm getting most of the, of the information from them. We've asked for proof of funds to support this project for 20 years, which Danko said it would provide. When we go online, there's only the rebuild, and there's 20 years of blank. So how much are they taking in in rents? How much does it cost to operate? You know, and we've got some numbers. People might say there's a million dollars they need each year. Well, where's that coming from? Let's see, and we have been receiving with all the meetings, there's been two Danko meetings, one community meeting, and I believe Latan came up with two different presentations, one in February, which I had to go back and look at, and one in July. And, and the information just is not consistent. You know, so we really would like to have one final meeting where it's, is it 20 years? Is it 50 years? Who's funding it? Who's going to be there? I mean, we'll go through this in a second. We're asking the city to have one official presentation at the next City Council meeting by Latan with up-to-date and accurate information. Really, the money is the biggest problem because we know the city's in a structural deficit, and the HCD has stated that the $21 million grant will be clawed back if the city cannot maintain for the 20 or 55 years the funding and the services that they agreed to in the agreement we haven't seen. And Nora Dizon has presented this information several times. And the other thing is what's going on? Who's going to be there? Originally, it was severely mentally ill, homeless addicted to drugs, sex offenders, and up to 10 veterans. Then yesterday on the website, it's veterans, individuals experienced behavior like PTSD and, and housed. And then today, it's changed again. So the state says no veterans. The city manager says yes, there'll be sex offenders, but sometimes we say no, there's sex offenders. We just don't know what's going on, and the zoning process...
Carol, your time is up.
Okay, can I get three seconds and be done?
Three seconds, quickly.
Okay, yeah, there's just, before the City Council can vote on this and the city can get behind it, can we please get what's today's, you know, numbers and just do a, Latan do a presentation that we can all understand and be on the same page? And that's it?
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Larry Stevenson. Are you Larry Stevenson, sir?
You have to face this way.
I'm sorry?
Okay. This is Larry Stevenson. And September the 17th of last month, I got a citation for an open container. I haven't drank for 25 years. I am almost 80 years old, and so I paid the fine $100, but it wasn't my beer. It was sitting on a bench in a brown bag. So he gave me, I asked him for an alcohol test. He wouldn't give it to me. So I paid the fine so I wouldn't have to pay $250 down the road. But that's, I haven't been in trouble for 50 years, and you know, quit drinking for a long time, and I tried to tell him, and it's not even my can of beer. But I think that's, and I couldn't even get a lawyer for that because it wasn't enough money, I guess. But to me, I'm on an income, and I made $100, $100 for something I didn't even do. I think that's brutality to the officer in Sussoon. And I don't think that's protect the law and not protecting me. I don't have a criminal record on me, felonies or misdemeanor, but I don't think that's right at all. That's why I'm here.
Sir, did you say it was in Sussoon City?
What?
Was a police officer in Sussoon?
What'd you say?
You said that the police officer was in Sussoon or in Fairfield?
Sussoon.
Okay, well, we're the Fairfield City Council.
Well, I figured it would be good to come here to tell somebody because I couldn't get a lawyer to take care of that.
The Sussoon City Council...
I had one DUI in '78. Look how long that's been, almost 50 years. But the thing, I'm here to talk to somebody, I didn't know where to go.
I see.
I'm having, you know, I worked 50 years of my life to get something that didn't do. You think that's right?
No, I don't. No.
So that's why I'm here. Where else can I go?
To the Sussoon City Council. It's going right now.
To do something, do the right thing.
Yeah.
Two more years, I'll be 80 years old. Why wouldn't I sit there and drink all day? I go to the gym and work out.
Hi. Oh, you could talk to the chief there.
What?
The chief, the police chief, right here on the left. He'd like to speak with you.
Talk to me?
He's going to help you.
Well, yeah, that would be nice.
All right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Take care.
Okay.
And our last speaker, Shayla Llewellyn.
Hello.
I'm Shayla Llewellyn, and I am here as the administrator of the Phoenix Framework and representative of the homeless. I have to keep this short, so... Your administration is defending the Vista Ridge financial disaster while evicting residents tonight. I have filed a whistleblower complaint, and I'm ready to walk in the door right now to the bank and finalize the compliance to save this city from the audit. I want, I'm asking for three things right now. Sorry, I'm very nervous.
Don't be nervous.
All right, I'm asking for three things right now. To stop the eviction and open up 1100 Texas Street and the bathrooms at Alawak Park, please that have been shut down for a week and a half. I don't want to do this. I'm sorry.
Miss, can you tell me where people are being evicted?
They're being evicted from, I don't feel like anybody's listening, or you guys don't even care.
I do care, that's why...
No, you guys don't care about anything but just take a look at this.
All right, we do care, miss.
You guys, because we're sleeping after you. You guys, take my most water and stink of my food.
That was sad. Okay. All right. Was this the last public comment?
Yes, did anyone?
Oh, did you wish to speak? Ma'am?
Yes.
Oh, okay, come on down.
Oh, okay.
I'll take your card. Thank you.
Lan Naguyian?
Hi, my name is Lan Nguyen. I'm a business owner on North Texas on, you know, by Rayleigh Plaza. So I just want to give you a comment and then be considerate about Vista Bridge. Please think about us. We are business owners. We have to lock the door every day about the homeless around there. And I just have a friend, she told me just last week, she found a man, the old man, you know, on the walk, you know, like, you know how you walk around, you know, retirement? And then, you know, he got beat off from two guy. She found him on the street. So please be considerate about that. Don't, you can bring them anywhere, but not on North Texas for people, you know, around here. They retired. I have a kid go to school around here. That really worry about us. Please think about, you know, like, people live around here. I chose to come here, I from Alameda, I chose to come here because I want to be, you know, my kid grow up here, be, you know, nice and quiet, you know, kid be good. So please be considerate about it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And we have a town hall meeting tomorrow if you'd like to come tomorrow. All right, thank you. Any more public comment, Madam Clerk?
No, did anyone else wish to speak on public comment? No, okay, and there are no hands raised online.
All righty, and then we'll go ahead and convene the joint meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority.
Okay, and Councilmember Tonason has left the meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
So let me just say that if anybody needs to use the restroom or whatever, we'll have to put a pause in the meeting because there's just four of us left, so, just to let you all know, or let myself know, anyway.
So the holding of a joint meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority entitles the council members to receive additional compensation of $35 for attending the joint meeting. And there's just the one item, and it's on a consent.
Okay, so we have the Housing Authority consent calendar then, please. L1.
Oh, don't normally read it when it's consent, but I can.
Okay, it's all right, we don't, we don't need to then. So do we have a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Sorry, do you want to ask if anyone wants to remove the item from consent or comment on the item before you ask for motion?
Okay, any public comment on this, Madam Clerk?
Any public comments? No.
All right, thank you. So a motion then to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And we're going to try to vote, huh?
Motion second.
Okay, I was told initially we're going to do all the votes manually. Then I was told we're going to do them in eScribe and then manually, and now it's back to eScribe. So hold, hold, please.
Okay, thank you.
Give us some time here.
Sure, no problem. Okay. I don't know, I'm stuck.
Now I've opened the voting?
Yep, all right, there we are. All right.
And has anyone...
It logged you out?
So we only have two votes.
We're waiting for, oh, wait, okay. He got logged out, so we're going to go ahead and do this orally. So we have a, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that was unanimous.
And next.
Oh, so the motion was Manveer Sandhu, and, and the vice mayor was the second, and then we all voted yes.
I'm just going to do it manually.
Oh, there it went. And so now we'll reconvene the meeting of the City Council, please, and go to the consent calendar.
Consent calendar, all matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the City Council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item. I don't have any speaker cards. Did anyone wish to speak on the consent calendar?
And nobody online, Madam Clerk?
No hands raised.
All righty then, so we'll go ahead. You're still logged out, is that right?
I'm back in.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
The vice mayor's motion, second. Mr. Sandhu, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all righty.
Thank you.
And then we are going to move on to new business.
Okay, new business, items O1, Updated Landscape Oversight Committee Recommendations for Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance District, Proposition 218 Balloting Process, and our Discussion and Direction Regarding Landscape Oversight Committee Recommendations for Modified Timeline for Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance District, Proposition 218 Balloting Process. And our presenter is Chris Lewis, Senior Management Analyst.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Tonight I am presenting the Updated Landscape Oversight Committee, or LOC's, recommendation for the upcoming Proposition 218 Balloting Process. The, the recommendation is for a new timeline, which was originally authorized in May of this year by this council, and it was for LLMD's number five, Smith Ranch, also known as Rancho Solano, and LLMD number seven, Rolling Hills. Just a quick note before I get into the presentation, the Rancho Solano community has withdrawn from the Prop 218 Balloting Process, at least for now, because in September of this year, the city and the Rancho Solano HOA successfully negotiated a contract, a landscaping and lighting, cost-sharing contract agreement. And under this agreement, the HOA will coordinate directly with the city to privately fund their desired level of landscaping maintenance services or any renovations they'd like in that area that the current LLMD is not taking care of at this time. So with this agreement in, in place, the community withdrew from the Prop 218 Balloting Process since there's really no need to increase LLMD assessments at this time. The updated recommendations that I'm presenting to you tonight will apply to the only other remaining LLMD that was part of the original recommendation, which is for Rolling Hills. On May 20th, I presented to you the LOC's recommendation for council to approve a timeline and to direct staff to move forward with a Proposition 218 Balloting Process. and to direct staff to move forward with a Proposition 218 Balloting Process, with the target date for new assessment rates of July 1, 2026, or fiscal year 2627. That timeline was approved and it's shown here on the screen. It shows that community engagement will begin in February 2026, which is when the estimated date of completion for the required engineers report, the date of completion for the engineers' report. And in very quick succession from that date, from March 2026 to May 2026, the city would have to mail ballots to property owners, hold a public hearing, tabulate ballots, and possibly form a new district if the property owners approved that district by ballot. This was a pretty ambitious timeline, and the LOC received some feedback from the Rolling Hills community, expressing their concerns for the short amount of time available for community engagement, specifically the time available between when the engineers' report would be published and when ballots would be mailed to the property owners. After this, they received the feedback, the LOC met on August 28th, and they moved to update their recommendation to you all to extend the timeline with a new target date for new assessment rates as of July 1, 2027, or fiscal year 2728. Under this new timeline, ballots won't be mailed until March of 2027, followed again by the public hearing ballot tabulation and district formation in April and May of 2027. Now, this timeline gives the city, the Landscape Oversight Committee, and the Rolling Hills Working Group members up to a full year to perform their required or desired level of community engagement activities. Now, just to clarify though, community engagement and education activities have already begun in this district, but the primary advantage of the new timeline is that working groups will have up to a full year to conduct more community engagement with the published engineers' report, which lessons learned from the 2023 balloting process, that engineers' report, it was very critical to have that in hand when speaking to the property owners. That is the document that sets the rates for, the new assessment rates that the property owners will be asked to pay under the new district. It's also the source of many of the questions and answers throughout the engagement process. The balloting may occur at any point leading up to March 2027, if the community is, is ready to go, August 2026, December, whenever, but March 2027 would be the deadline to get those new assessments effective in fiscal year 2728. The recommended action staff has for you tonight is to accept the Updated Landscape Oversight Committee recommendation and direct staff to proceed with the new Prop 218 Balloting timeline for the Rolling Hills LLMD, with new assessment rates effective July 1, 2027. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Do we have any public speakers on this, Madam Clerk?
I do not. Did anyone wish to speak on this? I think we're down to staff, pretty much.
Okay, any discussion here? Yes.
Super quick question, on this current recommendation before us, did the Landscape Oversight Committee consult with Rolling Hills residents, or did Rolling Hills residents participate with the LOC before the LOC reached this recommendation?
Yes, as I understand it, members of the LOC have either attended their working groups, the Rolling Hills Neighborhood Network's meetings, or other private meetings that they've had in that area with Rolling Hills residents. We've also had Carol Haddock, who was also here, making a public comment earlier today. She's a previous Rolling Hills resident, but very much still involved in the Rolling Hills community and helping them organize and, you know, facilitate discussions and things like that for this Prop 218 Balloting Process. She has been present at the LOC meetings, and also I believe there was a community meeting that we attended at the Rolling Hills Park where there were at least one Landscape Oversight Committee member.
The P File Sanctuary.
The P File Sanctuary, correct, that's where we were. So yes, they did receive direct communication from Rolling Hills residents.
And are, are they aware of this recommendation?
The Rolling Hills residents?
Yes.
I'm going to say yes?
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Would you like to move this then?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, then next item is O2, Resolution 2025-207, Amending Terms and Conditions for Fairfield Police Managers Association Memorandum of Understanding, amending the terms and conditions of the memorandum of understanding for the Fairfield Police Department, I believe. Sorry, something got cut off here. And our presenter is Farbod Perusman, our HR Director.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor. Excuse me, try that again. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm happy to report that due to some great collaboration and leadership from the Police Managers Association, the City of Fairfield, and our team, we were able to come to agreement for a successor MOU between the city and PMA. As a result of that collaboration and cooperation, as we've talked to you all before about our financial concerns and budget issues, we were able to save substantial amount of money over the long haul with this new MOU. In the next two fiscal years, we will save a nominal $15,000, but for the next, over the next 10 years, that will grow to about $335,000 due to this agreement. So we're very happy that we can report this to you. I want to recognize Angela Broaddus is our HR Manager, who's very pivotal in bringing this agreement home. And obviously, I'm here to answer any questions. In the agenda report, we have summarized some of the key points in this agreement. If you'd like me to speak to any of them, I'd be happy to.
Any public comment on this?
No.
All right, okay, team, any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion for this resolution.
So moved.
I'll sec, oh, he seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you, police managers.
Okay, our next item is O3, Resolution 2025-208, Community Action Partnership of Solano Joint Powers Authority Memorandum of Understanding, authorizing the city manager to approve a memorandum of understanding between Community Action Partnership of Solano Joint Powers Authority, Solano County, and the cities of Benicia, Fairfield, Rio Vista, Sassoon City, Vacaville, and Vallejo to partially fund the coordinated entry system. And our presenter is Samantha Burrows, our Homeless Services Manager.
Good morning, Council Mayor.
I wish it were morning.
Or afternoon, I'm sorry, my brain is, it's been a long day. So today we are going to, I have Deshaun Waters with me, who's the Executive Director of CAP Solano JPA, and he is going to be co-presenting with me. We're gonna give you a little bit of an update on where CAP Solano is. As you probably remember, we approved to fund some staffing over five years last year, and so he's gonna provide a little update with that and some of the things they've done since the staffing has come on place. And then we are going to discuss a coordinated entry MOU, okay? So we're, I'm gonna pass it to Deshaun to start with the background.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Deshaun Waters, Executive Director of the CAP Solano JPA, and before we jump into it, I'd just like to thank you all for your continued partnership, as well as you having the vision and recognizing the value of a coordinated regional approach, getting to it. The CAP Solano JPA is a community action agency, as well as the backbone, the administrative backbone of our continuum of care. Since staffing has arrived for the JPA, we've been able to strengthen, we've quickly integrated into the system, so we're filling in the gaps within our COC, supporting some of the committees, such as our Youth Advisory Board. Staff just haven't been able to do it historically, and our service providers are inundated with work, and so we're working to strengthen that system. We've working on, there's mechanisms in place, such as our Tri-Partite Advisory Board that have been underutilized, so we're working on, with that board, but also our COC, just establishing, you know, what exactly our roles are and how we can best coordinate to support each other regarding funding and collaboration. In terms of our strategic funding alignment, I heard, we heard the community, we need to come together and work together and address how we're gonna make decision-making around our funding. And so we created a funding framework, which, which involves our community getting input from our Tri-Partite Advisory Board, our COC, which will help us layer our funding, so we'll identify what the gaps are, what we're already funding, so that we don't duplicate the services we provide, and we're being more effective with the dollars that we utilize. In terms of strengthening our backbone, we've rolled out a monitoring and accountability protocol, starting with the smaller organizations, so that we had a chance to really understand what's going on and refine our process. Staff has also been able to release funds into the community a little bit quicker, now that we have more support. And recently, we released the prevention diversion dollars, as well as a RFP, actually today, for our youth rapid rehousing program. Why coordinated entry? Coordinated entry is supposed to be a front door for our, for our houseless individuals. There should be locations where people could walk in, connect with the community, and get connected to resources that they need, that they need. The partnership between the cities and counties and service providers is crucial to sustaining progress and keeping the momentum going and addressing homelessness. I also recognize that there have been concerns with coordinated entry. We, the staff have done a grantee survey, we also conducted our own individual survey with the community, we had great representation, Mayor Phil PD, a lot of the county service providers, executive directors, all the way, all the way to the folks who are doing the work on the ground, to really understand what's going on. We understand that there's limited access points. We understand that there's bottlenecks because there's a high dependence on one organization. We understand that referrals don't feel equitable or accessible, and so with that being said, we're trying to modernize it. We, we have our HMIS system, which is the database that supports our coordinated entry. We have a new administrator, BitFocus, who is helping us with creating those access points. My vision is to have an access point in every jurisdiction where someone can walk in the door and get access to the services they need. With that approach, people, you know, it limits the time that we have to build rapport. You know, there are people out here already doing the work. They walk into the door, you know, we ask tough questions sometimes in those interviews when we're trying to assess who's going where and what would be the most appropriate service. And so having a site within the city really strengthens, strengthens providers' ability to get that information and make sure folks get the services that they need. I want to increase the number of assessors. Also, we want people to be able to do real-time assessments, so we have outreach teams that don't have the ability right now to do assessments in the field. There are a lot of folks, me personally, I want to meet you face-to-face. And so if I have opportunity, if someone comes out to the community and they're doing the work and I'm familiar with them, I may not be able to get to a phone consistently, I may not be able to walk in, walk indoors. And so having these outreach teams be able to get into the field and do those assessments, I also find tremendous value in it, and that's something that we're working on again with our new HMIS Administrator, BitFocus.
Okay, so just to give a little bit of background in regards to funding with coordinated entry, in 2022, the county and cities excluding Dixon executed an MOU to support coordinated entry for three years. Fairfield's contribution during those three years was 219,400, and this expired in May. There was some money that hadn't been utilized from, due to like staffing levels not being up with the provider and whatnot, so that's what has been funding it since now, so with the gap, and there's, it's been funded. Back in July, the CAP Solano JPA approved a request to continue funding from the cities excluding Dixon and the county of Solano, so that brings us here to make the ask. There is currently an RFP to select the coordinated entry administrator. It is in rank and review. At last update, they are hoping to release the recommendation by November 17th, so that it can be at the next CAP Solano meeting.
The benefits of Fairfield supporting coordinated entry, you help us sustain the system that we're trying to create, that, that, that front door. We need people to walk in, you know, understanding that things haven't been great, then, you know, we have more oversight now. So supporting oversight, supporting the infrastructure that it takes to run this, this, this important mechanism is what we need, and ensure that folks who are on the street have faster access to services, which from what I heard tonight, sounds like is what's needed.
Okay, so impacts. So this last year, in your packets, I did provide you with the last three annual reports from Resource Connect Solano, who is the current provider. These are just outlines, so just kind of looking at the county overall, but I did highlight some data I was able to pull out, which is from Fairfield. They didn't break everything down by city, but there were a few things, that with 1,488 assessments, nine hundred, or 492 of those were Fairfield. In regards to those in the housing queue, so you see there's 976, so these are the numbers as of the end of May, I believe, right, the end of May. So Fairfield had about 400 individuals on the housing queue at that point, and then positive housing exits from their last fiscal years, which was 227 out of the system as a whole. 51% of those were from Fairfield, so 115, okay? So just to kind of give you an idea of overall systems. In regards to, you know, your results from investment, the best way I was able to articulate numbers is looking at assessments, because that is the one thing I had broken down by city, right? So this kind of shows you how many assessments were from individuals from Fairfield in each of those fiscal years. Now, the first year, of course, they were gearing up, so it wasn't as many, and what that translates in regards to how much we put in as our contribution those fiscal years to provide assessments for those individuals. This, of course, does not count follow-up engagements or phone calls coming in, these are just the individuals that actually had a coordinated entry assessment to be put on the housing queue. We've seen this before, the 2024 pit count, so this just kind of gives us a rough idea of what our housing numbers look like. And then to add to that, I did want to share, as of yesterday morning, I did have Resource Connect Solano run the queue for us, and we currently have 440 individuals in the city of Fairfield in the housing queue. So, I mean, that changes as people get screened and put into housing, so that gives us a good idea that, you know, the numbers aren't too off, but we do know that there are more individuals out there that aren't screened yet. In regards to getting more updated numbers, we are set to do it again in January of 2026, so we are starting to gear up in regards to doing the pit count again across the county. So the ask today is to partially fund coordinated entry, basically renew the commitment to do that. The three-year commitment for Fairfield's portion is 203, 39,743, I am sorry, this is how it's broken down by year. Each year, of course, has like a 3% increase, as so did the last MOU. Okay, any questions?
First, do we have any public speakers on this?
I do not. Did anyone wish to speak? No.
Nobody online? Okay, any questions or comments back here?
Just a couple, Mayor. Who comprises the board currently from our jurisdiction?
Doris is our primary and Doug is her alternate.
Got it. And is it, so each city has one voting member?
Each city has one voting member plus the county.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Any questions? Yeah, Vice Mayor?
Thank you for a nice concise presentation, much appreciated today. So this 239,743, this is general fund money?
Yes, it would come out of the general fund.
Okay, and what is your plan for coming back to the City Council and giving us progress reports? In other words, the numbers of unsheltered in Fairfield right now on your pit count is 414, sheltered 176. And I'm saying, are you gonna come back to us and say, oh, look, the numbers are moving and this project is working? Because I don't mind the general fund expenditure today, but my concern, my question is, what is your, what is your protocol for coming back to the city of Fairfield saying, hey, we're getting people off the street, this is working? And I know it's a coordinated entry, I'm And I know it's a coordinated entry, I'm interested in the coordinated entry, uh, the coordinated entry point for with the other cities, but I'm particularly concerned about Fairfield, because we bear the brunt of it. So what is, what, what, do you have a system in place to mark, to show progress?
Yeah, they, um, right now, they do, they, sorry, like, um, the resource centers, so Resource Connect Solano, and then we also have a domestic violence agency that is the, so, because it's separate, because the needs are unique. They do actually provide a monthly report, um, and an annual report, and that is part of the oversight that the Cap Solano staff does do, and they review those reports. But we could probably, um, schedule a time to come back whenever it is that you guys want a report, whether you want one in six months after it's implemented, you know, whatever it is that you guys want, you know, we can definitely come back, um, to provide some numbers.
Is this monthly report that you just mentioned, does it break down by Solano County City? Because I want to see what's happening in Fairfield, and I want to see that consistently.
I believe part of it does, but they can also, if there's other parts that you want broken down more, he can put that in as part of the monthly accountability and what they want in the reports.
So I, I will, you know, I, I would like to see, uh, how often do we need this data? Six months?
Well, um, I mean, we have been putting out a quarterly, um, report and, and update. I think there, the, the data that Samantha and Sean are referring to, um, we could add that and maybe just make a modification to the quarterly report that we're already putting out.
That's good.
Um, that, that way you're getting that information on a quarterly basis.
Okay, and it's gonna show us what I, specifically what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, I want to, I want to, uh, maybe ask a little bit of a follow-up clarification. Um, what I, what I thought I heard you ask was, you know, are we gonna be seeing data that's gonna show that the money the city of Fairfield's putting into the coordinated entry system is resulting in fewer people on the streets?
In Fairfield, California.
In Fairfield, California. Um, coordinated entry will have, um, you know, correct me where I'm wrong here, Samantha and Sean, but coordinated entry is not necessarily going to lead to fewer people on the streets. Now, it's a coordination of getting people into the services, into the systems, uh, but there is also a deficit of the, of the amount of, whether that be shelter beds, transitional housing, or permanent supportive housing, uh, that are real long-term solutions to actually getting people off the streets. And so that's, that, that's where, um, the coordinated entry system is that front door. It's, it's the entry point into helping to put people in contact with the services. But I think across the county, one of the things that we're seeing is a slow ramp up in the, in the amount of services that are available. Uh, in Vallejo, you have, um, what's the name of that project, their permanent supportive housing project?
Uh, it's Broadway Project.
Yeah, Broadway Project, um, they, they have their navigation center. Obviously, we have the, the Beck Avenue Shelter here. Um, uh, there's transitional housing is still a gap along, across the county, as well as permanent supportive housing is a gap across the county, um, because you, you can pull people through the system, get them into shelters, but if they have no place then to go from that shelter, uh, that's where you see a lot of the spin back out onto the street.
Well, I'm just saying that spending two hundred and forty thousand dollars out of the general fund needs to come with some kind of expectation of success. Success in the programming, it's working, you know, because that's what's happened, that's what's wrong. The state of California, I'm not even gonna go there, but we spend all this money, and you know what? Nothing appears to change. So I'm willing to take the risk and do it, but I want to know where, when you're gonna come back and say, city council, residents, your money's being well-spent because this program is working. That's all I'm asking for.
We can, we can definitely work on that. So one thing that, uh, that hasn't take place, that hasn't taken place with our HMIS system historically is that there are not beds, you know, we need, the beds aren't accurately represented in the system. And so when we talk about referring to those beds, um, we, we can't, because, you know, even if we made contact with folks, like, we're trying to, right now, it's a, a pay-for-play system, we're trying to piecemeal it here, there, and get people there, and so by having this court, by having this system and supporting it, we can input those folks into the database and, and make more connections. And so, um, those do, those things do take time, but like, you report out on how we're building the infrastructure and the progress we're making is definitely something that we can continue to do.
Okay, so I'm just, I'm on the record, I'm on the record. I want to see tangible progress in the city of Fairfield from this. And with that, I don't know if there's any other discussion, but I'll-
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Um, so it's, it's good seeing you, Sean. And you too, and thank you, it's very well, um, put together. Um, my question is, so an RFP is out now, does Cam and R does it right now, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And they've done it from, since the beginning. What is the problem with what they've done because it's been a disaster? Can you tell me what you found?
Talk on the feedback that we got from the community?
Well, from the feedback and what you've seen, you're an administrator, so. And how are you fixing it? I think that's-
I don't, so just from, from the feedback we've seen, so right now, they have office, the office spaces aren't accessible. When I talk about accessibility, you have to make an appointment to, to get in, right? And so-
Right, you can't just-
The, the Fairfield office space is on the other side of the freeway. If transportation is a concern, as I mentioned early on, if you don't, if, if you don't have proper transportation or a phone to, to schedule an appointment online with two-on-one, those are barriers to access to the system.
Right.
Um, because, uh, the access points were, were, uh, were only with RCS, we were unable to, when you do check-ins, you, you have to check in to remain in the database and in the system, like, every ninety days?
Something like that.
Every, every third, every sixty, ninety days, you have to stay active, right? Because some folks get housed, some people get other resources, so you need to stay active in the system. Um, in other communities, you have outreach teams that go out into the community and, and, and touch base and have those touchpoints so that people stay active in the queue. We haven't had that historically. Um, also, we haven't engaged with a lot of our providers, um, and got them into the system. So, uh, in my prior, previous role, I was, uh, working with some shelter beds, and so getting those beds and getting people integrated into the system, um, is a huge step to making that progress.
Okay, um, so does Cam and R currently, or have they had places in each city for, for people to come in and check in? Or is everybody from the county coming to Fairfield to get to the coordinated entry? Because it should not be that way.
So they have historically had an actual physical brook and mortar in Fairfield and Vallejo, and then they've done some satellite times in other cities.
That's not acceptable.
But that is what it's historically meant.
Is it that changing?
It is changing, and they also, they are, um, and they also-
You don't need everybody coming to Fairfield.
Understood, and they've also, you know, uh, opened it up to SIAT, the, the regional, the, the outreach team.
Yeah, I get it. Yeah, I get, thank you so much. You've got a, a great smile, too, great attitude. Um, and then, uh, the other thing is, I want to know, um, when these folks are being put into the system, and I'm familiar with the old HMIS because I worked in, I worked in this, and I would put people in. And I was very particular about who was a Fairfield resident.
Yeah.
How do you decide who's a Fairfield or Vallejo, or how do you decide?
We're working on those things, and we have BitFocus who does the one system out in San Francisco that, you know, and they're, they're regional-wise, so like, that's what we're building right now, that's what we're working on.
Okay.
How do we identify, it's the same deal for other agencies, other city, other jurisdictions, like, how do we identify that those folks are from the community and, and need priority to the system, and so-
Yes.
That's, that's, that's in the works.
Good, um, because I know that we have a lot of people, because we're the county seat, who come here, maybe they get out of jail and they stay on our streets, and also other cities are, um, bringing people here. And, um, so, uh, we want to be responsible and help people, but we want to make sure we're helping Fairfield people. Um, not to say that the others aren't worthy of care, because they are, all humans are, but, um, we need to be responsible to our taxpayers here in Fairfield, so, and I know that Sam gets to hear this a lot, um, about our return on investment. Last question. My last question is, why do we need all this money upfront? Can't we just pay it every year? It's a big chunk out of our-
So we would be invoiced year by year. They don't invo-
Okay, so it's not just one big-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They don't, no, 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 they invoice us year by year, it's just the MOU would be a three-year MOU, so we don't have to keep coming, you know, back every-
Gotcha, perfect. I like that, saving the time. All right, any other questions? Are we good? Oh, yeah, oh, go ahead, Councilwoman.
I was gonna say thank you, DeShawn. Um, I've been there since, I think, the beginning, I'm one of the oldies that's been on the Cap Solano board, um, and I appreciate that we're finding the gaps and fixing them, because I think that being able to do that with the group that we have currently, we've worked pretty well together and making sure that there's equitable access to the resources and the money. Um, I think we've worked pretty well together up to now. Um, so just thank you, and I'm excited to, to get this going.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And before we vote, um, I understand that Councilwoman, um, Williams, uh, would like to make a public comment. She's not commenting today as a voting member, but she's part of the public and she is online.
Yes, Valeria just told me, okay.
All right, thank you.
So, um, Valeria, you can bring her online. Thank you.
Hi, colleagues, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. Um, and by the way, even though, um, where I am, I'm not noticed, I have been listening right from the beginning, so people that have commented that all city council members, you know, weren't there, um, not there, but I've been listening from the beginning. So, um, some of the comments that I was gonna make, um, my colleagues have, um, surrounding HMIS, um, when I talk to other counties, um, what they say is that, um, uh, Solano County is not, their providers aren't, they either don't have access to HM, HMIS or not documenting, um, appropriately, so we're not tracking, um, uh, these touchpoints which the, uh, with the homeless community to be able to give us the analysis that we need. I also agree with my, um, colleague, um, Vice Mayor, that said, you know, you come before us more. I think that should be a requirement. We, we don't want to just hear from you-
Love the pause, because there's no quorum.
Okay, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, could you just pause for a moment because, um, uh, the Vice Mayor had to use the restroom, and we'll let you speak some more, okay? Councilwoman Williams?
Uh-huh, I just heard pause.
Oh, yes, we're just gonna pause just a second while the Vice Mayor uses the restroom, and then we'll let you continue, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, because we don't have a quorum right here.
Was this not a public comment?
No, we, we, um, Councilmember Williams, we only have four here in attendance right now at the council meeting, so we, we have the bare minimum for a quorum. So anytime any council member may, uh, you know, need to use a, or have a bio break, uh, or step away from the dais for a moment, then we no longer have a quorum, so we, we can't continue conducting the meeting. So, uh, what the mayor is saying is simply that, uh, we're taking a, a brief pause until we, uh, return to having a quorum at the dais, and then, uh, you can continue with your comments, uh, and we'll reset it to, um, Madam Clerk. I think it was about a minute forty or so, uh, remaining in public comment for, um, Councilmember Williams as a member of the public.
Thank you, and thank you for coming on mic to, to, to comment, because I could not hear at all.
And just for the record, Ms. Madam Mayor, just for the record, because some people may be listening but not watching, um, the reason for the pause was, um, Vice Mayor Bertoni had to take a quick break, and so per the instructions of the city attorney and per protocol, you lost your quorum, so you were just waiting for the quorum to return, which I think you now have.
Yeah, so, um, Councilwoman Williams, you're on again.
Thank you very much. Um, so, okay, I hit on HMIS, concerns, um, uh, getting reports, um, from this, uh, uh, body on a regular basis. Um, and then my last, um, minute, um, wanted to talk about the pit count, that was on the screen. Um, I remain, um, uh, always concerned, um, uh, due to the last two cycles, that the pit count, um, doesn't match what actually is happening in not only Solano County, but especially, um, Fairfield. Um, the homelessness, uh, match, it does not match. Um, and it feels like, and I always feel like, um, people are comfortable that the numbers that they're seeing on screens for pit counts in Fairfield is correct. The, the homeless community that serves this population don't believe it's correct, haven't believed it's correct in the last few cycles, and I feel like we need more, um, accountability, um, uh, to, um, to change that. So with that, my public comments are complete, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, so now I'm gonna bring it back to the council to, I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous. And so next we're up to, and thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Item oh-four?
Yes, please.
Resolution twenty-two-five-dash-two-zero-nine and Ordinance twenty-two-five-dash-ten, Building Standards Code adoption, resolution twenty-two-five-dash-two-zero-nine approving required findings related, relating to the adoption and amendment of the twenty-two-five California Business Standards Code, also known as Chapter Five Building and Housing Code of the City of Fairfield Municipal Code, and Ordinance twenty-two-five-dash-ten repealing and replacing Chapter Five of the City of Fairfield Municipal Code, also known as the City of Fairfield Building and Housing Code, adopting by reference Title Twenty-four of the twenty-two-five California Code of Regulations, known collectively as the California Building Standards Code, respectively Part Two California Building Code, Part Two Point Five California Recent Residential Building Code, Part Three California Electrical Code, Part Four California Mechanical Code, Part Five California Plumbing Code, Part Six California Energy Code, Part Seven California Wildland Urban Interface Code, Part Eight California Historical Building Code, Part Nine California Fire Code as amended in Chapter Eight of the City of Fairfield Municipal Code, Part Ten California Existing Building Code, Part Eleven California Green Building Standards Code, Cal Green Co, Cal Green Code, Part Twelve California Reference Standards Code, and also adopting the twenty-two-four International Property Maintenance Code and supplementary secondary references. And our speaker is Jeff Thomas, our Chief Building Officer.
Hey, very good. That was really good.
Good evening to Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Um, thank you for having me here tonight. Um, as, uh, our city clerk announced, I'm here to present, um, for introduction for our repeal and replacement of our Chapter Five of our Building and Housing Code, um, in our municipal code, which is the adoption of the Building Standards Code of the state of California with our local amendments. So I ask you tonight to adopt the resolution approving the findings for the amendments within our local ordinance. Um, we are making one additional recommendate, recommended amendment this year to address some firelife safety issues with, uh, both ZENSCO, um, electrical service panels and Federal Pacific Electrical Service Panels. They have shown historically to be, um, very, um, unsafe for causing fires and electrocution in homes, so, um, in light, or in, instead of doing a, a moratorium and requiring them to be replaced just outright, um, I am suggesting that the city adopt the amendment that would require replacement of any of those panels if they are touched or modified in any way, which would be, say, if somebody added solar, as an example, the panel would need to be replaced. Um, the additional, we've also been seeing a lot of additional, um, heat marks and burning on, um, other panels due to solar and EV chargers, so we've implemented, uh, we're implementing ways to, uh, address that safety issue in this amendment. Otherwise, all the other amendments are historical, which Fairfield has, I'm sure you're aware, has, has done very few.
Right.
Um, so, uh, just a couple really quick, um, other highlights to note, um, really not much change in the building standards codes this year, except for one major change that they've taken code sections out of other, um, parts of the code and created a new code this year called the Wildland Urban Interface Code.
Yes.
Um, it's a new part in the building standards code, um, also known as Title Twenty-four, um, of the California Code of Regulations. Um, so it does, it, there are some areas, uh, with the new state fire marshal's adoption of the new fire, high-fire maps, um, historically Fairfield did not have any areas of high-fire, and, um, with the new adoptions, we, we now do. Um, about thirty percent of the city is affected by, um, new high-fire designations. However, only about ten or fifteen percent of the city will be impacted by the Wildland Urban Interface Building Code requirements. So, um, the other two items really quickly are AB one-thirty, which, um, this- two items really quickly are AB 130, which the parts of that assembly bill that address building code requirements is it has now mandated local jurisdictions to allow subdivision master plans for single-family dwelling residences to have a 10-year code span. So basically, I have a master plan that one of our developers says is pulling permits from now. If it was approved last year, it's good for nine more years. People can pull permits from that. So that'll be a good thing from a cost savings aspect for the development community. So I'm excited to see what that does. And then the other part of that bill does not allow local jurisdictions to make any other changes to the building standards code except for fire life safety issues. So you can't just go and increase all the energy requirements more anymore. If you have them adopted previously, you can keep them, but no more for the next 10 years. There's a moratorium on increases. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Any public comments on this?
No.
Okay. So I'm going to bring it back to you. Any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion. And what we're looking for in the motion is to adopt the resolution, waive full reading, read by total only, and introduce the ordinance for first reading. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. It was unanimous. Thank you very much, Jeff. Come on down there.
Okay. Our next item oh five, Resolution 2025-210 and Ordinance 2025-11, Fire Code Amendments, Resolution 2025-210, Repealing and Replacing Chapter Eight Fire Prevention Code of the Fairfield City Code, adopting by reference California Code of Regulations Title 24, Part Seven, Part Nine, known as the 2025 California Fire Code, with amendments to reflect local conditions and adopting by reference certain provisions of the 2024 International Fire Code, and Ordinance 2025-11, Amending Chapter Eight Fire Protection of the Fairfield City Code, adopting by reference California Code of Regulations Title 24, Part Seven, Part Nine, known as the 2025 California Fire Code, with amendments to reflect local conditions and adopting by reference certain provisions of the 2024 International Fire Code. And our presenter is Stephen Conti, Fire Marshal.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, esteemed members of council. As Karen indicated, we're asking to adopt and introduce our new ordinance for our three-year adoption of our new fire code and standards. This will ensure our city stays in current with best practices for new development, existing, to provide the best fire protection, defensible space, home hardening, and best safety practices for our city for the continued and foreseeable future. I am here tonight to ask as a first reading to again adopt and introduce this ordinance and ask for your blessing to move forward.
Well, I bless you all the time anyway. But do we have any public comment on this?
No.
No. Any questions? Okay. Well, so what I'm looking for is to adopt the resolution, waive the full reading, read by title only, and introduce the ordinance for first reading.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Conti.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. So I am sorry to do this, but I'm going to have to take a five-minute break because I need to use the restroom. I don't mind saying it. I mean, it's natural, right? Anyway, okay. Going to public hearings now, Madam Clerk.
Okay, public hearing one, Ordinance 2025-09, Mobile Food Vending and Licensing, Creating Chapter Five F Mobile Food Vending and Licensing Ordinance of the Fairfield Municipal Code to Establish Mobile Food Vendor Regulations. And our presenter is Keisha Mamoril, Economic Development Project Manager.
Hi, Keisha.
Hello. One moment. Sorry, it's a little high.
It's no problem. I totally get it.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. This evening, staff is pleased to present the proposed Mobile Food Vending and Licensing Ordinance for your consideration and adoption. This ordinance represents a balanced effort to support local entrepreneurship while ensuring public safety, operational consistency, and community compatibility. As interest in mobile food vending continues to grow, the need for a clear regulatory framework has become increasingly important. This ordinance establishes that framework, one that promotes economic opportunity while protecting the public and maintaining Fairfield's community standards. Tonight's presentation will begin with a brief overview of why this ordinance is needed. We will then review key provisions that define where and how mobile food vendors may operate within the city. And I'll discuss enforcement and compliance measures, conclude with next steps and staff's recommendation for adoption. Over the past few years, the city has received a growing number of inquiries from residents and entrepreneurs interested in operating food trucks within Fairfield. However, the city's current code does not provide any guidance regarding mobile food vending, specifically on matters such as location, operating hours, and public safety standards. Without specific guidelines for mobile food vending, Fairfield can face public safety risks, enforcement challenges, and community conflicts. Unregulated operations may lead to sanitation issues, traffic hazards, and unfair competition with brick-and-mortar businesses. Clear rules help ensure safety, fairness, and support for local entrepreneurs. As a joint effort between the city's Code Enforcement Division and Community Development Department, the purpose of this ordinance is to create a clear and forcible and equitable framework that enables responsible mobile food vending operations. This framework is designed to protect public health and safety, ensure neighborhood compatibility, and support the city's economic development goals by providing new opportunities for small business growth and innovation. Mobile food vending offers several benefits to the local economy and community. Food trucks can activate underutilized areas, drawing people to business corridors, parks, and community events. They provide diverse and affordable dining options for residents and visitors alike. For entrepreneurs, food trucks serve as a low-cost entry point into the food industry, offering a pathway to build customer base and potentially transition to brick-and-mortar establishments. By promoting equitable access to business opportunities and adding variety to the local dining landscape, the ordinance supports a vibrant and inclusive local economy while maintaining neighborhood character and community standards. Public safety is the foundation of this ordinance. All mobile food vendors will be required to obtain approval from Solano County Environmental Health prior to operation. The ordinance includes standards for safety, waste management, and noise to ensure safe and compliant operations. Vendors must obtain and maintain a valid city business license and liability insurance. Enforcement responsibilities will be shared among code enforcement and community development, ensuring coordinated oversight and consistent application of the rules. These measures are designed to protect both operators and the public while providing clarity and fairness in implementation. The ordinance specifies where and how mobile food vendors may operate. Food trucks will be permitted in designated, excuse me, designated commercial industrial zones subject to specific sighting and distance requirements. Minimum separation distances apply between food trucks, restaurants, schools, residential areas to reduce potential conflicts, and standard operating hours with flexibility for any approved events. Additional requirements address noise, lighting, and cleanliness, ensuring that food trucks remain compatible with their surroundings, and respectful of adjacent uses. This approach encourages economic activity while maintaining community standards and quality of life. Each applicant will undergo individual review through the city's permitting process to confirm compliance with location, safety, and operational requirements. Staff will work collaboratively with applicants and property owners to ensure that approved sites meet all standards and contribute positively to their surroundings. This process allows flexibility for innovation while maintaining oversight and consistency across the city. Enforcement under this ordinance will be proactive, consistent, and transparent. City code enforcement team will conduct both scheduled and in random inspections to ensure compliance with safety and operational standards. Violations may result in warnings, citations, or permit suspension or revocation depending on the severity of the infraction. Additionally, staff will review compliance data annually, ensuring accountability and allowing for ongoing refinement of the ordinance as needed. Should council approve the ordinance this evening, staff will provide clear information on permitting, inspection, and compliance requirements to ensure a smooth transition for potential operators. Implementation will begin immediately, and staff will monitor activity closely during the first year. Based on observed outcomes, staff will return to council with any recommended adjustments to improve efficiency or address emerging needs. This phased approach ensures thoughtful rollout and continuous improvement. In conclusion, staff respectfully recommends the council adopt the mobile food truck ordinance as presented. The ordinance provides a comprehensive and balanced framework that promotes economic opportunity, ensures public safety, and upholds community standards. It reflects the city's commitment to supporting small business innovation while maintaining a safe, clean, and vibrant community environment. Thank you. And staff is able to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. And do we have any speakers? No. Okay. Nobody online either, right? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back for council to discuss, ask questions, or whatever you need. Any comments? Any? No? Yes, Councilwoman Pandora.
Thank you. Thank you, Keisha. I was reading the ordinance and it talked about the county doing the health inspections. Can you talk about how the county and the city would work together with those health inspections, just to make sure that everyone is, I guess, on the same page about those?
So when the county does their own inspections, it is because of their permitting. And because we require the operator to have current permit. So if they fail their inspection, they're not going to get their permit. Therefore, we can't move forward and process their application through our ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. And then I had another question. I also read there was going to be a permitted, like a food vendor, a mobile food vending permitted area map. So that's going to designate where the food, where the people could pop, could set up shop, correct?
Yes. So it was under that we can, we can provide that map. As of right now, the current ordinance, as it is written, it is allowing food trucks, or actually not allowing food trucks, to be in public-facing, public right-of-way. So that means on streets. So if we were to provide that map and redline every public-facing, public right-of-way for safety reasons, it will be the entire city. And so that's why that was the caveat. However, with, again, with the phased way we're doing this, this first year is very critical because this is how we gauge the success of this ordinance, or whether or not we need to revise.
Okay. It just, I guess I think I was looking at Tracy's, that they have a mobile food permitting. And I was seeing that they have like zones. And I saw, was like glad to see that we were having, like, we might have like a map. And I think my other, not concern, but just like, I could see where, because I know the vendors have to be like within 100 feet of one another. So then how do you, and this is just me like thinking out loud, like, how do you get, what if, is there like a time, a time limit that one can just sit in that parking lot? You know what I mean? Like, what if there's like a hotspot where people like to go, right? So how do we limit like that one truck from being there for two months, whatever, whatever the timeframe is, and not allowing maybe another food vendor to come in and like be in that, that high visibility or hotspot area?
So as of right now, the way it is written is that in order for you to, as a food truck, the, as a stationary, it's called stationary, you have to be there for two hours or more. And that would require additional documentation when you are trying to go through the process. So however, depending on the situation, that is when code enforcement will So however, depending on the situation, that is when code enforcement will have to come in if it is infringing on safety. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Did Jeremy, you wanna say something?
Good evening, I know it's been a long night. So basically, once they exceed two hours, if we check in with them from a permitting process and they're exceeding two hours, we will indicate to them that they have to apply for additional permitting process to extend that time. But mobile, the idea of mobile is they need to be moving throughout the city, no more than two-hour stay, if that makes sense. There will be some locations that will be additional permits given for long-term stays, but in the meantime, it should be mobile, two hours should be no longer.
So like, the food truck in front of CBS? They can't be there for any more than two hours a night?
With this policy, or this ordinance, correct?
Oh, wow. So any two hours within that time? Okay.
Is it six?
Like, six to 10 or something?
Yeah, just to clarify, page three of the ordinance, under, what section is that? Five F two definitions, as Keisha had pointed out, stationary, which I think is what Jeremy's referring to, says that it's considered stationary if it remains in a single location for the purposes of food vending for more than six consecutive hours within a 24-hour period. So it's, it's that provision that will give code enforcement the regulatory teeth to say, hey, you have been here for this long, you are now considered stationary, you're no longer mobile food, you need to move along.
Got it. Okay, unless they have a, like, a letter from a private, from the private landowner.
So there, there is also a caveat, for them to be on private property, they need a written permission as part of this ordinance, and working with economic development and what that looks like, so they can't just do a napkin, say I have permission, so yes.
Okay, no, I appreciate it. I think, I'm, I'm glad that we are finally, we're getting to this point, it's much needed. So thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Just a brief comment, I wish we had this last year, I think, right when this started popping up.
Right.
In District Six, we've often said it's a bit of a food desert. And I think last October or November, right there off of Peabody, you must have had, I might be exaggerating, but I wanna say 30 cars, 20 cars lined up eating, getting food at a, at the, what do you call it even, a truck?
Yes, it's a food truck.
It was like a mini restaurant, you know, so.
Yeah.
A mobile food vendor, which I was guilty of contributing to, but it was really good.
Dangerous.
Thank you for getting this done now, because I know in District Six, it was, it was used quite heavily when it was, when it was open. So hopefully, they can bring it back, which I've seen them, yeah, I'll stop talking now, actually.
As long as they're permitted and they go through the correct channels, then we will allow them to, well, not me, Jeremy and his team will allow them to stay.
Yeah, 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 thank you, thank you.
Well, I'm sorry.
I am, but yeah, thank you for getting this done, appreciate it.
So I want to say a couple of things. One of them is, thank you for the presentation and all of this, but I want to give huge kudos to Jeremy and his crew that were out there cleaning up those streets of these. And what happens is, this is something that I've been looking into, because I'm working on it with the county and other cities, so they all, we all have about the same. With the mayor's conference, so anyway, bottom line is, somebody died in Vacaville from eating from one of these food trucks, because they don't refrigerate stuff. It gets, do not eat at these unless they do have the permits and the county permit, because these people don't care. Most of them are not from here, they come from other areas, and also, they have found down in Benetton Valeo that they are trafficking children out of these, and they make the children sit on the side of the road and sell food. And I don't know if we've seen that up here, but this is disgusting. And I am glad with you that we have this in front of us, and I appreciate the intensive work that all of the teams have done, the police department, Jeremy specifically. So I just wanted to say that, and I appreciate you too, Keisha. So I am going to bring this back, and what we're looking for is waive full reading, read by title only, and introduce the ordinance for the first reading.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous?
And our last item, P two, Resolution 2025 dash two eleven, Updated Fee Schedule, Amending the Master Fee Schedule for Fiscal Year 2025 to 2026 Police Fees. And our presenter is John Furtado, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I do not have a presentation, so I'll be saying goodnight very soon.
Good night.
So what we see, what you have in your packet is, when this fees were adopted one and a half years ago by council, there was a mistake with the police fees. So when it was updated with the budget, it was updated on the wrong schedule. In between that, there was a corrected schedule that council approved. So what we are doing today is, as we were auditing, we found mistakes in that, so we had to do it through a public hearing. And all we are doing is correcting the fees based on the corrected version versus the wrong version that they were based on. So in your packets, you have a old, cross-marked incorrect package, and then the revised one that we are adopting today is the new correct fees.
All right.
That concludes my presentation.
Thanks, John. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Any, any speakers on this?
No.
Oh, sure.
My name is Mavashar Chowdhury. I don't actually have a comment per se for this, but I just wanted to introduce myself because I ran late, just came from San Francisco, but I had a public comment on a non-agenda item, I guess I'll come back next month now. I guess it's too late, so I just thought I'd show my face, since I'm already late.
Well, thank you, and I'm sorry, it is a public hearing, if you wanna talk, you can.
If it's, if that's okay, I was here back in 2002. My name is Mavashar Chowdhury, I represent Payless Towing, which is one of the towing companies in Fairfield. It was a long process, we had gone through some things, and hopefully for the better, because we went through the whole permitting process, and we are now officially one of the businesses in Fairfield. Currently, we're trying to apply for, to become part of the public rotation agreement for the Fairfield Police Department, and we're hoping to get some guidelines on that, since we've been going back and forth for the past about four years. And I just wanted to show my face and let you know that, hey, we are interested, and we're trying to go through the proper channels, but we've seen a lot of hurdles. And to avoid having council get involved and other people involved, I thought I'd just show my face and just be present and let you know that, hey, we are trying to go through proper channels, but they've been very difficult. And to avoid any other legal troubles and things like that, you know, we were looking for maybe some help or some guidance from city council and maybe give us some direction, but if that doesn't happen today, I just, like I said, just wanted to show up and let you know that, hey, I am here, and we're trying to make it happen, and coming to the people who have power in the city and who usually make the final calls, so.
Okay, well, we can't give you advice, but the police chief is right back there, you could, you could say hi to him.
Absolutely. Just wanted to show my face.
And I have you fill out a card, just put your name.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. And I guess we have no other comments, so I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring it back to council. So what we're looking at is adopting the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. And that is the end of this meeting, because P three's been pulled, and we will adjourn until November fourth at 6:00 PM. Happy Halloween, everybody, and happy Diwali.